All right. We will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, September nineteenth. This is being conducted in person and via Zoom pursuant to the general laws. Anybody is recording, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Okay, we will be recording and putting the meeting online on our webpage as well. Seven o'clock, town planners reports.
Thank you very much. Okay. Three items to report on following the last meeting. I had the pleasure of attending a meeting today with Director of the Rural Fair, Director of Rural Fair, excuse me, Anne Gobin, who came to Southwick today for a meeting. Largely speaking, this was what we call the initial discussion, where we touched upon a lot of the funding opportunities and assistance that's available to the town. If I were to be keeping a scorecard based on opportunities mentioned versus opportunities pursued, I'd say that Southwick's doing very well. Given that we don't have an on-staff grant writer dedicated position. There was a lot of basic information here from public. And all across the board for those who are independents. Okay, last week I attended my onsite visit at the Noble Street subdivision with select board member Jason Perron and Jesse Saltmarsh, the developer for the subdivision. This site visit was a bit of a spinoff from discussions that were spurred along earlier in the summer when, you may recall, residents had submitted a letter asking about incomplete infrastructure and certain construction stage, I'll use that term at least, elements that were left in place, hadn't been addressed or were in the process of being addressed. So by and large, this meeting was just to try to come up with an idea. Let me take one half step back. As the board knows, there's no stipulated timeframe on that project. So my communicated element to the developer was that we wanted to make sure that we maintained forward progress or responsiveness. As that project approaches completion. So we also set a couple of milestones. Regrettably, they can only be, well, they can be committed to at this time. The biggest milestone I think we all appreciate is the completion of the loop road and the installation of the culvert over the wetland area and those matters. You may or may not recall that the conservation restricted, despite having been reviewed, prepared, signed off locally by both the select board and Conservation Commission. It wasn't signed at the state level, whether the last yard, if you will, entered quarter. And with a change in administration, forms changed. And so that document is in the process of being recomposed, re-circulated. And that wetland area can't take place until that conservation restriction is recorded. So having said that much, there were some, we'll say, optimistic timeframes about where the project may be approaching winter. To be specific, the idea is to try to have all of the pieces in place. That culvert crossing isn't something you can do. You have to get in there, do the job and get out. Because as you place one element, you need to stabilize the surrounding terrain. You work your way back up to the road level. The hope is to have, if you will, pieces in place as we enter the winter. Pieces meaning administrative, so that that culvert can proceed ideally through winter months or coming into the 2024. Okay, last, uh, like it's in construction. I don't mean to use that, but knowing that there's truck traffic, heavy truck traffic that still has to come in and out for delivery of materials and concrete and earth moving containers. There are certainly sections of the road that need more attention than others. I imagine that Jesse's going to have to put some effort to maintenance before he gets into the winter, snow clearing season. But I just want to make sure that we at least touch base on that. There was no formal response. There were internal responses to that inquiry since I think it came to us. Just near to the grandest. A little bit of people in the waiting room and Will Messing's report on. Out of the waiting room. Okay. Last thing I wanted to share with board members and the public, that we are in receipt of a correspondence from the Attorney General's Office related to their review of the short-term rental bylaw. It was, yeah, that one right there, yeah. It was accepted with, but they elected to strike one section. And that had to do with the, what I'm going to refer to as a local appeal process that we contemplated to be discussing. As they read the document, they interpreted it as being more global in nature and therefore, you know, our time trains that we set forth, they don't align specifically with zoning under state law. So their final action was to say, okay, they approved the bylaw without that local appeal section. I verified with town council that the bylaw is indeed active at this point in time, as it was when it was approved at town meeting. I want to circle back with everyone. I did receive several phone calls from Pat Odion, who was a subcommittee mentor. And we all may recall that next door to her, there is a short-term rental. That appears to still be in operation and she wanted to inquire about the, what we call permitability at this point in time. So I think we have all the pieces that problem. Just want to share it over. And that's it.
And obviously make sure Kyle's aware, to the extent he hasn't received the letter. So that he knows that that process needs to start because he's involved in the process.
I will make sure that I connect with the building.
Seven oh five, public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda?
Comment.
Mr. Phelps.
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight Epo Street. I see later this evening under discussion, you're looking at Perry three Epo Street for request to extend the term of the planning board decision, which was to allow a hundred units to be constructed on that property. And based on our master planning process, it has come up that in Southwick, there's definitely a lack of reasonably priced housing. And that's both for purchase of homes and also rental property. And my thinking is there's an opportunity here to provide some affordable housing through this project. If you do, in fact, decide to do a modification of a special permit, however you proceed to extend that decision, I would certainly think that it would be a good thing for achieving some of our targets. And you'll be seeing that on Cooper Fifth, we're coming in, or you're coming down and joining the Master Plan Advisory Committee. They're going through the chapters and there is a chapter on housing. And also we have a separate housing production plan that has been developed. So the targets are challenging, especially on the affordable housing side. So just thinking ahead, this may be an opportunity now that you're looking at this again to extend, possibly modify that decision.
Marcus, just so you know, it's not, I gotta look to see what needs to be done to extend the timeline, you know, the date for completion that is in the special permit. Right now, it's not on for any kind of modification. So I don't think other than, unless that can be done sort of administratively or by vote, it's not on for a public hearing. So I don't think we can modify the permit in any way, shape or form.
You haven't decided that yet. I know you're going to discuss it, so.
Yeah, no, and that's understood, understood. Okay, Diane?
I second Diane Gail's viewpoint. I second everything you just said and would urge you to consider that as well.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Seven ten.
Is that just public comment regarding things off the agenda?
Anything that's not on the agenda. Yeah, we will get to the items on the agenda. And there'll be a period for public comment during the public hearings. Yeah. Seven ten, one fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road, zone change petition, public hearing.
So, Mr. Chair, I will bring up the petitions. There's a and you have public notice reading. I see that Mr. Ribenskas is here as well to represent the application.
Evening, sir. Come and grab a seat. All right, notice, public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Master and Law Chapter forty A, Section five, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven ten PM via Zoom and in the Landers Hearing Room, Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, to consider amending the Southwick Massachusetts zoning map reference in Section one eighty-five five of the code of the town of Southwick by redesignating a portion of a certain parcel of land from agriculture and conservation to business restricted. Said real estate being located at one fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road identified as Assessor's Map sixty-eight parcel fifty-two and described as follows. The portion of the property that lies between the southerly line of Feeding Hills Road and a line drawn two hundred and thirty feet south of and parallel to said southerly line of Feeding Hills Road in the fifty-seven, containing seventy-eight thousand square feet of land, more or less, being the norally portion of the premises described in the deed according reported in the Hammond County Registry of Deeds and Book two two seven one four, page four fifty-one. Zoom information is provided. Details regarding the proposal may be reviewed by contacting Tom Fanner, John Goddard at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should hear the time and place designated by the Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. Okay. Mr. Fred, did you want to comment in here, John, for later?
Yes.
All right.
So my name is Arturo Sribenskas. I'm representing Crepe's Tea House, owner, manager, all together. I believe you have proposal from Steve Solvini. He's not here, unfortunately. As much as I understand it, we talked about that. It's not whole partial we're talking about, but just a land which can be closer to a road, kind of, not whole piece, three and a half acres. It's I'm not, I just don't know how to describe. He's probably would be the best who will kind of explain because it's partial of the wetland, but majority it's whatever closer to the road. I don't know how that done, but he kind of explained to me. Yeah, I was not going to get into the details.
Let me ask you this. Do you know why it's only part of the property?
Because other part is kind of significant wetland and brook and all that stuff. We don't want to touch that. And it's not going to be any effect, no change for that. I don't know why, but it just because we run into few issues. Let's say, for example, even we request that if we possibly can have additional freezer onto the, onto our property, it's, it kind of stops us from moving forward with any projects we're running just because we're not in the.
Oh, no, I'm more wondering about that. Part of, part of it versus the entire.
Oh, I don't know about that. Probably Steve will be the best who would be answered, you know. I have no idea. Okay.
All right, any, anything else you wanted to add?
It just because so many different things we run into with, like, as you know, those buildings which we built, gazebos which we built. On top of that, we want to add the freezer to the side and everything we do, it's kind of stops us. Like, for example, we have solar panels on the roof and we have idea possibly have electric chargers for electric vehicles. And anything we do, we kind of come up to stops just because we're not in the business district because it's residential, agricultural, conservation and all together. We're thinking would be beneficial for the town and for business and for everybody else. So you have any questions?
Anything from the board? Any comments or questions at this point?
We like an electric charging station.
Yeah, we have option for, because we got approached, because we have solar panels on the roof. And it's more and more electric vehicles in the neighborhoods, even electric lawnmowers now available.
Reason for so Patriots come like.
Yeah, they can charge it for no charge.
Where would these be located?
This is where we start because, you know, anything we do, even choosing a location for that, it gets created because it's kind of not business area. We cannot even move forward, you know, where we can even put them, you know. Because anything we talk about it, it's kind of get stopped just because of that.
All right. Yeah, Dick, go ahead.
Two questions. Would this be considered spot zoning? Number one, and number two, would this affect the parking requirements for the facility?
So to answer number one, I don't believe so. Spot zoning is really, it's difficult to be considered spot zoning anymore. I mean, I view the question as whether this property is more appropriately business restricted than agricultural property or what the more appropriate zone for that property is based on how that property has evolved over the last however many years. So I don't think it is, but at the end of the day, it's not my decision or our decision to make. I don't think, I think it's more the Attorney General's decision to make. So, you know, if they say it is, then it is. But otherwise, I'm not sure that's necessarily our decision to make.
Okay, would this affect the parking requirements for the facility?
The second part of it, and I, this is probably, I should say this more generally, not just in response to your question, but so tonight is simply a request for a change of zoning that's applied to this property. It's not a request for a change in use or modification to a special permit. It absolutely has nothing to do with the Conservation Commission, which we are not, and what their decision was or may be in the future. It is simply a request for a zoning change. Now, the zoning change may allow for different uses or, or may expand on what they can do on the property. And that's certainly, I think, an appropriate discussion to have tonight, but I do just want to make sure people are focused on what we're here for and not other things. So I don't think, we're not here to talk about the park, but that's, that's for a modification to a special permit or application later on. So this is simply just about the, the zone that is applied to this property. Anything else, Dick? David, I mean.
I'm sorry, no, no, Seth, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other board comments, questions? No? Okay. All right, town officials have any comments or questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll volunteer, just for clarification, the two hundred and thirty feet noted in the position encompasses what we'll call the developable portion of the property. Welcome to speak and rough a thumb off of GIS, and I'm sure Mr. Solvini's survey does a more precise job, but essentially that takes it from the front property line back behind the new house buildings and then across.
Well, I mean, and I only raise it because it strikes me that it's almost like an argument, argument about spot zoning. That would be the argument is why we're only doing half the property. But if the other half of it is not developable, then it really doesn't make sense to expand it that way. It really is a moot point at that point. So.
I would say the move that appears as you're interpreting is to be motivated by what we call the weather resource area. That's beyond what they're just involved.
Okay. All right, let me just start by reading in a comment, or sorry, don't forget it later on. This was received today from Diane Juzba, I don't want to mispronounce her name, J U Z B A, who lives at one forty-five Feeding Hills Road. Writing to you today, as I am not sure I can make the meeting tonight to share my thoughts. I strongly oppose any changes in zoning requested by the owners of Crepe's Tea House and my reasons are covered below. First, the structures they built, AKA gazebos, are not within the specifications that were originally outlined in their first proposal, and I do not believe the story that they didn't know until they're already built. That excuse is an insinuation that we are of lesser intelligence. It's your property. You know what's on it. Two, the structures, I will not call them gazebos, are not ADA compliant still to this date. Three, the parking is an issue. Four, they have altered the vegetation along the road. I feel that the requested zone change is an attempt to yet again increase the footprint of their establishment without abiding by the proper channels and authorities. It is disheartening to say the least that this has occurred at all. And it sets a bad precedent if it's allowed to continue. As taxpayers, we are not allowed to build on our property without proper specifications, permits and inspections. The same should hold true for them too. I feel that until they comply with all previous issues, they should not be allowed to change anything, including silver. Thank you for your time. It is appreciated. All right, so that is probably a good example of things that are, have little connection to what we're here for today. I mean, I, it I just, what has happened in the past as far as permitting and use? I'm not sure how that applies to whether this should have its own change or not. That's my personal opinion, but I'm not sure. I don't want to spend the entire night going, rehashing things that can be brought up again in a application for a modification to a special permit. That would be the place to do it. This is not really, we're not considering anything about that at this point. We're not considering parking. We're not considering the use of these gazebos. So any public comments? And I'll start with folks who are here in person and then we can kind of go to the folks on Zoom. Anybody in person have any comment? Yes, ma'am. Just name and address first and then go ahead.
Diane, just my feelings.
Okay.
I wasn't sure that I could make the meeting tonight, so I wanted to send my email just to share my feelings about this. I know that after hearing what this is all about, I understand that it wasn't the right maybe platform for tonight, and I get that. But he also brought it up that everything he's attempted so far has been shot down. So in a way, it kind of does coincide a little bit. My concern is that this is yet another way to get this done without having to go through the proper channels. The fact that we're now considering a zone change after all of that occurred is my concern. It's just odd that it's just happening to the back part of the building where all of that happens today. So again, it's a true concern. This, that's my property. I am listening to this. I'm seeing it. I'm watching all of this occur. And I have yet to see anything done about the fact that all these requests were made and still haven't been informed to. So I'm just very concerned about moving forward with any kind of changes because everything thus far has not been done according to. So I'm just a little concerned that moving forward again is not going to be done in order. That's my concern.
Okay, and I, just let me say, I wasn't, I didn't mean to pick on you by saying that. I just wanted to at least use that as an example of things that.
What business restricted means, what's restricted?
So here, I mean, here's, for what it's worth, this is my personal thought, not anybody on the board, but myself. There are, in Southwick, a number of properties that because of the way they were zoned and have maintained to be zoned, what's actually being done on the property is being restricted from, from doing most anything if they want to expand in any way, or they even want to add in some small structure because you can't expand. If you're not the proper use for that zoning, you can't even expand outside the footprint. All right, so if you wanted to add a small little, you know, you know, something like freezer to put in there, you couldn't do that because of the way that is. It happens by Congamont all the time because that's all residential. So any business that's over there, they have, they have to stay within the footprint and there's not a lot they can do. So, you know, this was brought up to say, well, instead of trying to sort of put a square peg in a round hole because this has been a restaurant for a long, long time. You know, why don't we actually change it to the proper zoning? And then we can deal with what the requests are on the substance of the requests and whether they should or shouldn't be allowed. But let's not let the zoning be the one that stops those requests from coming in. That's the way I think about it. Understood. No, understood.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments from folks in person? Yes, sir.
You're on all steam at one forty-nine, you guys are probably a neighbor, sorry, so. I just went, if you go into like a business, a man goes to business, does that give you a more, not please do what you want without, because it's business zone, you can make a lot more changes and we have any control and we have a set of a precedent that it's easy to make the zoning change. I live next to a store with a nice garage, basically, and I go to and then back to trailer entry here. Can I change it to business and then free to track the trailer to my yard? You're going to work in my yard that easily, you know?
So a couple of things. One is you will get more freedom per, you will get more freedom because you won't have to stay within a footprint of what it was. That doesn't mean that you don't have to come in front of the planning board and get a special permit for the things that you want to some degree, right? I mean, it's going to depend on what the request is. They can, they can put in accessory builder or things like that, you know, through other permitting processes. But for use, and that's the big issue here, is what the use of these outbuildings will be. That's something that still needs to come in front of the planning board. So that's not going to change that. You know, that's gonna so I, like I said, there is more freedom there, but I, at the same time, I do think that it is, this isn't a you couldn't go into, I don't think it would be entertained by the board and it arguably could be spot zoning. If you were sitting in a residential neighborhood and, you know, one property in that residential neighborhood said, okay, I want to turn this into a business restricted zone. I mean, that doesn't seem appropriate. This seems a little bit different where you have a business that's been there for years and years and years that is not zoned as agricultural rather than business and changing that to reflect what has actually been going on there for, for many, many years. To me, that's a little different story and doesn't set a precedent for, you know, someone in a residential neighborhood coming in and saying, hey, can we turn this one lot into business restricted so I can do something there?
I think it was brought up, when the person with the business was there at the restaurant, there was quite a few people here in spite and they're involved in that. One of the issues were the restaurant being purchased as a restaurant and a outside activity that's already frowned on and the person was being amazed. They were all aware that a lot more neighbors get to point that they don't want to go back to where they were fifteen, twenty years ago with outside noise and parties that caused a lot of common aggravation, traffic and accidents there that places are involved with. So that was that, I brought up as a business that nothing going to happen outside. We're buying a restaurant. That's what our intent is, to have a big restaurant. I've been in many times at the Nefertiti restaurant and I, I don't amend on what he's done with the visitors. I skip the yard with cars here. I'm happy for a man, you know. But at the time, it was an inside business, not spending every day with the work time and everything. I was the first one to say, yeah, you have molecular, so he deserves it. He's got a good neighbor. It is catapulted in another location. This is where we're concerned.
And that, and again, I think that that's something that will be better served to discuss in a hearing on a modification of the special permit because there's nothing we can do about that now, but in a hearing on the modification. There's nothing we can do about that now, but in a hearing on the modification for a special permit, that's when we can do something about it, so. Um, and saying it now, just so you know, saying it now doesn't help us. If you say it in the hearing, it's some, it's it's evidence in the hearing and then we can sort of. You know, rely on it when we write a decision, so that's the time to do it rather than now. It doesn't change, I mean, you may still not support the zone change, but. Um, you know, that's probably an issue that is probably better addressed at that point in time. Um, any other public comments in person, Marcus?
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight Depot Street. Uh, I would question making this property a split zone. It's three point five acres, the total farmer property. And I think if the change is to be made, it should be the whole property. Because it looks like out of three point five, they're going to use one point eight is the um. The part that's going to be changed, the R. So the remaining area is one point seven. Which could in fact be a usable lot as a lot in an AC zone, so I would say. Change the zone on whole property, not splitting.
Uh, any other public comments, sir?
My name is John Morgue, I live in Seven Lakes, it's in service from the back of a butter. And um, I think, you know, I just want to voice my hopes and look for the zone change. Um, I think this is a problem that you'd like to have, you have a person basically presenting with a business that's acting viable. In a area that's in a, in a location that's traditionally been a, a restaurant accountable to the viability. I would also emphasize that um, this is a Slavic restaurant, one people don't know that Slavic people is the largest ethnic group in Europe. And you have a lot of people basically not from Southwick, not from Southwick, but maybe even coming from other places to go to this record, this is a destination record. It's a good for your, it's a good for your, uh, your campaign in terms of having a viable or is compared because it's very important to me. It's the destination record that this man brought to you, they're basically in in the Southwood, it's bringing business in from outside of Southwood. That's very important, one that they they need to keep in mind, um, and 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 I hope you will support that and be happy, this is a, this is a good. Good situation to have, to have somebody who will run businesses here. Um, you know, it is bringing people in uh to Southwood and not having people who are like, exactly. Um, I'd also say, oh, oh, I met Art only once before, my daughter's work for Art. Um, my daughter's work for Creep's Teahouse for three years now, he's treated her fantastic, and he treated the other employees fantastic. So not only is he bringing money from outside of the community, but in addition, he's employing a lot of people in the community and the west school. A lot of them are high school students, younger people as well, eventually meaning or he's providing them with people, which is very, very good. I think the last thing I'd like to speak to is is the noise issue of people, you know, and living in that, I never heard anyone from the last, basically. Um, I'm farther away than some of the closer others are, but I hear quite a bit of noise basically coming from a little cross track, which is fun, I think that's something that I actually support. My attitude is that it's in a public benefit, and although I hear it just about every weekend when I'm outside, it's not something that I basically fix on, and it's something that I basically. Uh, and that's the public good. I hear noise from a rifle issue in my, almost every week. And you hear constantly shooting every morning and and although I don't participate in that, that's something, and basically, I think this. There's something that people have the right to do. Um, I doubt it can have a lot of noise basically in those gazeboles. Um, of people dying, who may have some, but I basically, I think that that's something that you have to weigh against the public benefit. This man for any of yours and funding your reliable role in this, so I just want to take that there for everybody.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from folks in person? Okay, um, anybody on Zoom have a public comments? Just uh if you can use the hand raised function, great, if not, um, just speak up at some points. Okay, seeing none, I think. Any other comments from the board? Okay. All right, um, I'll give the applicant, and if you have anything to add, um, before I close the hearing.
Do you? Uh, do we want to close the hearing at this time? I'm only asking, not having had any confirmation on a. Fall uh special time meeting. I think we need to close within six months.
That is a fair point.
Good news is that we opened the hearing in an appropriate timeframe after the referral from this life. The bad news is.
No, I'm just trying to do. Yeah, so. Why don't we um. Why don't we continue it to the next hearing, but the sooner we can find out about that, the better, obviously, um, but we will. So we're going to. Out of an abundance of caution, we'll continue it to the next meeting because. Um, so this ultimately needs to go in front of a town meeting um to be voted on. Um, we just, we either approve it or deny it, and then it goes in front of town meeting. Um, there is a requirement that um these not be. Completed at the planning board level outside of six months from a town meeting. We don't know yet whether we're going to have a town meeting in the fall, um, special town meeting in the fall, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Um, so right now, we would be outside of the timeframe for the May town meeting. Uh, so we'll just continue this to the next meeting. Uh, in the meantime, try to find out further information on whether we're going to have a um fall town meeting or not. Um, and then when we do one way, if we are going to have it, we can close the meeting and issue a decision, if not, then. Uh, we'll get into that six month period where it can still go on to the regular town meeting.
Anything I need to do?
There's nothing you need to do at this time, uh, you can just reach out to. Uh, John or John can reach out to you when we get some more information about whether there's going to be a town meeting and what the next steps will be.
Okay, okay, great, thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll continue, right? Your emotion. That on for, that's not on for.
Not yet.
Yeah, I would say, why don't we just put this on for uh seven twenty on October tenth? Right here, emotion. Dave's being so moved.
Richard Ossinger, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Dave's being aye.
Jessica, aye.
All right, thank you. Six months, I wasn't even thinking about that tonight.
I can, you know.
What do you need us to?
Did I read this?
Have that ever. Okay, good, all right. This one, I'm sorry, this one first and then the food after? All right. Uh, seven twenty, proposed bylaw revision to chapter one eighty-five, section thirty-five point two, medical and recreational marijuana public hearing. Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of master and law chapter forty-eight, section five. That the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven twenty P M. The Zoom and in the land use hearing room, Town Hall, Port fifty-four College Highway, Southland Mass. To consider amending the to code of the town of Southwood, chapter one eighty-five zoning. Section thirty-five point two, medical and recreational marijuana to allow non-medical marijuana retailers and define appropriate locations. Uh, Zoom information is provided, details regarding the proposal may be reviewed by contacting the town banner, John Goddard at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time, place designated, Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southland Planning Board. Well. Start this, I will read in the memo that was sent to the select board. Which is. This Southwood Planning Board requests select board announcement and approval to hold a public hearing in order to consider proposing articles to town meeting for the following purposes. To consider modifying chapter one eighty-five, section thirty-five point two, medical and recreational marijuana by. One, striking or otherwise modify, otherwise modifying one eighty-five dash thirty-five point two C. And thus allowing non-medical marijuana retailers as defined in Master and Law, chapter ninety-four G, section one, to be permitted in the town of Southwood. Two, amending one eighty-five dash thirty-five point two E to redefine the permissible locations of off-site marijuana dispensaries as defined in. One eighty-five dash thirty-five point two D definitions. Three, potentially amending the marijuana district's overlay map as cited in one eighty-five thirty-five point two E four. And four, revising the numbering and sequencing of said bylaw section and subsections to maintain consistency with the remainder of the bylaw. All right, so. Uh, let's start with the board members. Um, comments, questions? Thoughts in general? Anything? Mr. Ossinger, did you have anything?
No, no.
Nobody. Um. Well, the only thing I've wondered about is if it's really more the the overlay map. Should we give it a once over, right, and just see are there any, maybe pull it back from any residences that have sprung up in any areas since?
I suppose we could do it in that fashion, however. My thought in general on overlay maps, especially after what we just went through when it came to cellular. And wireless overlay maps, that sometimes even with the best of intentions to make them properly prescribed, they end up being. Uh, restrictive and sometimes not in our favor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and at the risk of improperly adding one particular parcel or leaving off a particular parcel that we. Go based upon zones versus trying to spot zone approvals now. When it, that's something that should be done in a special permitting process. And whether that particular parcel based upon its location is appropriate at that time.
So you're advocating more of a.
Do away with the overlay. This is. Business, industrial zoning, and then. That particular parcel comes before us in the special permit process, that's where the. Focus on whether that is an appropriate parcel should be handled, as opposed to us sitting here now and saying, okay. Parcel this one, we think it's okay now, but in ten years from now. Maybe those residences aren't residences anymore, maybe it's a different type of business now, maybe it's a school now, maybe, you know what I'm saying, so like. That's my concern, and that relates for overlay maps in general, not just this particular.
Isn't that, but I mean, we effectively have that, right? I mean, the map now allows for cultivation sites in the industrial restricted zone. And that's, that's all it is. Uh, I mean, we do have a separate map, but it really is just showing the industrial restricted zone, I think. Plus I'm missing something.
I see, and that's a good, that's a good. Actual demonstration as to why they're not a good idea, because there could have been a parcel ripped out of the industrial. District when this map was first generated, and we don't know why, or we don't know necessarily the motivation at that time. Whereas if we say it's zone, that's the zone. Not, oh, we think this particular parcel in this decade does not fit versus ten, twenty years down the road. Is it a?
So then what's your proposal for?
I would propose that we include the business, business restricted districts. For an off-site dispensary, meaning you are allowing for. A business, the dispensary, as opposed to the cultivation and major processing that is associated with other industrial type uses or locations.
What you're thinking on the business? Including the business one in there.
What is your reason for that?
I'm not saying I'm not, I'm just saying, I just wanted to know, right, so the business zone. Is basically the Y area, it is up Grantville Road, it is. Yeah, it is depot, um, it is, what's the other part of? Oh, by Congamont.
And none of those sound off the bat as unreasonable.
Okay. Over in the lake area. There you go. Yeah, basically up Point Grove from, yep, Southfield. And then down by. A Congamont Road, you're heading into Connecticut. Yeah, no, I, we've, just in the past, we have distinguished between the two, right? I mean, I think that the mixed views. Is only in the business restricted, I think. Um. Also, there's something else that's only in the business restricted, but I can't think of what it is. But I.
I mean, if it's in the V zone, it still requires a special permit because of the permit that it is. But that's part of our bylaw in and of itself, not necessarily. This district versus that district.
Right, because we had similarly with the wireless, right, we had certain setbacks and other restrictions, whatever it was.
Just because it happens to be doesn't mean that it is going to be workable depending on where that particular. Personal is. Um, and just, you know. And seeing other businesses that are open, the different varieties, there's. The smallest one that I know of has less than a thousand square foot business in a. Strip of other small businesses and since opening, it's only helped the neighboring businesses and. Listen. Everybody needs a cut, ice cream, pizza.
Hold on a minute, I just need to go back and look at.
Well, the difference between the and the R.
Yeah, so I mean, I suppose. Because you would otherwise be able to put this into the business zone. By right. Without a special permit, and uh, except the fact that thirty-five two requires. A special permit for all marijuana facilities.
So that, if that was the hinge, was that business versus the R, the R requires a special permit, that's already included in, but. I think if you, you know, business zone permitted uses. Business retail store, that's, that is what we're talking about, really.
Okay, um, anything else from the board?
Just, as I, that's my opinion in regards to the zoning. Just, as I, that's my opinion in regards to the zoning slash overlay. So my thought would be a removal of the overlay map and. It just creates trouble twenty years down the road when we, when we look at a special permit. And then to. Strike. As suggested by the planning board memorandum. So and then adding a line in that bylaw about what zones are versus the upper level.
And then obviously adding in the part about the cultivation and the industrial restricted, I suppose. Alright. Alright, um. Any town officials have any questions, comments?
Everybody knows that I brought this forward. Um. I'm not opposed to keeping an overlay zone if necessary, you know, and a lot of the concerns that came to me from the constituents and whatnot where, where is this gonna go? Is, are my kids gonna be walking by? I think all of us know we're gonna restrict where this goes and where, where it's laid out. CCC has some very significant guidelines as to where it should and shouldn't go. I'd have to completely reread everything yet. I don't know. It's got to stay away from schools, it's got to stay away from churches. They kind of fall into school, but uh. Again, like Jessica said, I think the best way to avoid, you know, my whole thought process has been a special permit. We're going to. Say yay or nay either way. So I would not be opposed to removing the overlay zone as she suggested. But I'm also not a hundred percent opposed to changing the way it is laid out. There are some sections of town where I'm. Do I, do we expect that these places don't? But I think it's best. I think it's just best on a case by case basis. No, that's what a lot of the other towns have done. You're probably talking about Southampton, right?
East Hampton.
Southampton, one in the Red Rock Plaza. There's one in the Red Rock Plaza and again. As I said back in September last year. In my professional capacity, so I don't get dragged in front of the district. We've seen no significant, no increase. Prime or the issues that a lot of people brought forward. I know it's not everybody's favorite thing. Neither is alcohol. You know, there's a lot of arguments against and for all of it, but I like where Jessica's gone with this. That was kind of my thought process. I know, I believe you're talking about the cell power overlay thing that happened. That was a little bit before me and I know what's kind of going on with that because of where I sit, but um. I think that's the best way to handle it. I think we've got a very capable planning board, a capable strike board. And we kind of know what we want to do with this in this town and how we want to control it. So that's the route I would go. I would be more towards what Jessica's advising or. And just clearly staying where it can go. And that's my piece.
Thank you. Any other public officials? Mister Mogan?
I tend to agree with the thought about eliminating the overlay. Things have changed even since the time that overlay came to be. There's things that are on the map that weren't on the map at the time. My opinion is it should be limited to the I and IR. It is by special permit. And I'd also ask the planning board to consider to write into their proposed legislation a limit on the number of dispensaries in the town. Give it to the elected planning board to sign that number. But the other thing is from where I sat at, I just want this come. I was involved. In the original subcommittee that sent this bylaw back to. Planning board and also went to town meeting where we ended to the ballot box a couple of times where we worked on this and hence where we are right now. I would not trust. One word as written by the triple C today. And as being, have any guidance in effect of a bylaw. You need to control your own destiny. They are going to ignore, continue to ignore anything of input from anywhere else. And do whatever they want. And so don't put yourself to be in a position where you're controlled by this triple C thing. So their rules and regulations or what have you, even, even. The legislature has practically censured the triple C for being so far in front of their own rules and regulations. That they had to pass legislation to try to bring them back onto the, into the ring of competition, if you will. So. Set up the rules such as we want for the town of Southwick and go back to town meeting in that manner. Thank you.
Any other public officials? Any top mind? I do have a hand raised. Uh, let me just. Sage isn't a public official, do you? So let me just go into, let me open up all the comments generally, and then we can go to Sage. Alright, so. Comments from the public in general. Uh, I always go with person first. Marcus.
Marcus Phelps, playing the whole street. Little history, that overlay map mirrors the IR zone at present time. I wouldn't be opposed to doing away with overlay map because of some of the implications, ramifications that can develop over time. So having said that, I would say. That the retail dispensaries should be in the BR zone. Should, we need to study the zoning map because there are some. B zone properties that are in residential areas such as forty-two depot street. Such as Point Road, Low Area and some others that I think don't let themselves well. To having a retail marijuana establishment. The BR zone, which is in red, is a decent area. I mean, there's going to be opportunities. It's not going to be restrictive zoning, um, obviously. It is somewhat restricted in the sense they have to go through the process. To get a special permit and so forth, but I think that defines a little better. The B zone, uh, I think it may create some problems. Oh, and if you do do away with the map, then, um, the production would be in the IRs.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Marcus. Any other public comments in person? Like we've hit just about everybody in person. Um, alright, Sage, go ahead. You can unmute.
Hello, yeah, I was just jumping again. Sage Fury, ninety-one Granville Road, Southwick. Just want to give a two cents on the marijuana thing. I was just wondering. Uh, because it is technically for medical, can we place it either near or even inside a pharmacy if they're willing? Because I know a lot of stores, a lot of shops join forces now because of the economy and the prices of renting land and stuff, so. Can we maybe reach out to, um, our pharmacies and see if they'd. Put up like a space inside their building to actually distribute because this way now you also have secondary eyes on who's actually obtaining this stuff. It's, it's almost like you're, you're making a second guard of security on who's actually acquiring it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the guidelines as well as I'm sure some people here, but I can't imagine, given the requirements of what is needed for a retail shop, that that could be. Or would be economically feasible. Um, it certainly wouldn't be feasible the way they're set up now. I, I. Again, I, I don't know them as well as some, but there are some significant. Security. Um, and, and logistics, uh, requirements for these facilities. Mister Perron can probably.
The address Sage is concerned, the simple answer to that is no, it's not allowed. That's all there is to it. They have to be standalone. And they have to, they have to have every single exposed, you cannot have a hidden spot. Everything's got to be covered. The, the, the security again, when Mr. Mogan said about the CCC, I agree hard today. I wasn't saying we should follow them, that's for sure. The only thing they seem to do is want to take more money, but um. What Sage said, no, you can't.
Alright, any other public comments? Okay. Uh, you got the agenda there? Any, uh, anything else on the board before we continue this? Alright.
Just maybe here, if. You know, I agree that the business zone that is in existence around the Ben have Point Road Road and the one. Pink box. Of forty-two depot. However, and you know, I was, so I would not feel.
Marcus is forgetting.
Mister Phelps, B and B and C. Trademark. Other than those, which I would not, you know, feel remiss in saying, yeah, it makes sense to leave those off. However, I. Would then feel kind of odd about removing Gillette Corner, removing the property next to Big Y that's already well established as business. And, you know, very easily there could be a business put in there, especially at the, you know, industry. Whether you would want it, whether it could be argued, whether it's an appropriate place later at a special permit time, I think it kind of does. That's, that is a business part of one of the only business districts here in town is that. Forward. So that's just, you know.
I mean, I think.
So I agree in part, but also at the same time, like, oh, you know.
I think the area around the Pioneer Valley Dairy. You know, that's another spot that there's a lot of residences and everything else like that. Uh, well, that's another. Whereas I think generally speaking, the BR zone. No real problematic areas there. Uh, but I do agree with you, the whole big Y area down here. I mean, maybe it's a hybrid, it is an overlay that happens to encompass the BR zone and some, some of the B zones.
Yeah, or, you know, again, we leave it to the, you know, we want to really take a closer look at the places that we would be leaving off. Like, is there even a potential parcel there that would have the distance requirements that we already allow or asked for in the bylaw?
Right, that's the other thing, right? Because business is twenty, right? Versus VR, which is.
No, I meant for our cannabis, our marijuana bylaw, we require a certain amount of distances from residents, from other.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, the properties in the B zone can be smaller and they may not have as much room to put it on and.
Exactly, and that was part of my point about the, you know, storefronts at this point, you know, at the beginning, I think a lot of people just assumed that if we were going to be a dispensary, you would also have some sort of. Processing or cultivation happening on site and. Some of them more profitable and maybe the one that would fit more appropriately in the business zone would be a small retail front.
They were saying, so.
You don't need a huge parcel, but you're still going to say you can't be within a thousand feet of, of a residence. You can't be next to the school, so.
This, this strip mall here, now, some of these places would get busy where they have to bring in security for traffic details and all that.
Yeah, not really.
Yeah, we do. You know what I'm saying? It, it does happen. Now, putting it up like up behind McDonald's on a little teeny tiny strip mall, you can't get through there now just to get a cup of coffee. You throw a pot shop in there and it's going to get a little bit more congested if that's going to be the case.
And, and I will tell you that because that was one of my questions and concerns for this other small business because it is on a. Street where there's, it's just on street parking. I said, how do you guys handle that? Because I've never, I've never been, seen it very busy or a line out the door and. When they first applied for their special permit, the town of East Hampton required them to do a limit. Of how many people and their online ordering app, you have to set your reservation and we could only allow this many people at the store, but it never became an issue. And so the town let that go after their special permit. So, you know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I get that it's possible that a lot of these places that are in this B zone that are problematic. May not qualify anyway, so therefore not a problem. Yep, but still, I think we kind of owe ourselves to go through it. I hate to say it, almost parcel by parcel analysis to see if we want to go that way to make sure that.
And just leave it as be and we can do an analysis of those particular, not necessarily parcel approval. Because again, we don't want to be denied, okay, denied, okay, and then twenty years down the road.
Well, we can, twenty years from now, we can revisit it, change it.
I'm not gonna be here. But, you know, sticking in strip malls is just, it congested enough. Except for the, you know, the one at Gillette, where you've got that big giant center parking lot, it's still constricted. I'm in this town all day long, every single day, and I could count the numbers of accidents per day in the ones where I stopped to have a coffee in the building. And I can count the number ones per day over here at, at Grishmell. Because it just gets so tight in there. It's basically just a road and parking everywhere and it's full. It's always full.
So are we?
Place, small places like, like behind McDonald's there, it's just, if it, if it's going to draw a big crowd because it's going to be the only one around, it should be in a standalone building somewhere. Have their own parking lot, have their own.
They have to be in a standalone. So it would have to be, it would have to be off of the strip.
So if you couldn't tuck it in the corner of Big Y's parking lot.
They do not need to be standalone.
You sure?
Actually, Mister Jaren, who was here in town, he's, he's. And I know, and I know the one in Southampton is in a strip mall.
There's one in.
We get a lot of Connecticut coming in because our, our big Y.
Personally prefer standalone, yes, but I also don't want to throw business to town because everybody knows why I brought this forward.
I, 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 I hear your argument and practicality as somebody who will be spending approximately three and a half hours in that parking lot tomorrow afternoon for multiple dance lessons. And the challenges that can arise when trying to find a parking spot there. I. Don't know that I want to say, okay, we're not going to include it because the business might be a good business and bring tax revenue to the town. No, no, that's not a good idea. I think that becomes a balance of, you know, the business owner. Not being able to handle it and then the owner of that particular strip mall saying, yeah, we don't want to.
The owners of our strip malls at Dallas.
Not my, that's not for me to. I'm not going to discriminate against them on that.
I'm looking, I'm looking ahead for an answer, you know, putting, putting it in this teeny tiny, especially that mall right there, it just.
I imagine that gave some pros and cons for McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts to have a pot shop right there.
Yeah, they're really gonna hate it. Or the corner market, I mean.
They might, they, they may want it, but when I get out, when I go, I want to go stop and get myself a nice little fruit shake and I got to park in the private parking lot, walk over there.
I understand. I mean, we need to look at what the.
Really have enough room for two cars to pass this way with two rows of traffic.
No, I understand. We need to look at what, how it affects the community as a whole, but I'm just saying, I, I'm not sure the business owners. May be too upset about having it there because it brings in more traffic for, for, for places that are.
It's not just about the business owners. It's about the people who live in the town.
I mean, but I, you know, when we're talking about the business owners there, I'm not sure that they would mind it. I just think it's, we got to look at a bigger picture.
Yeah, and one of those could should be addressed by the special permitting process, right?
And, and because you may not believe that Gillette Corner's particular strip mall and its current itinerary and layout would be appropriate for, in your opinion, that doesn't mean that. To the left of Big Y might not be appropriate, you know what I'm saying? So like you're, I hear you on that particular issue, but the remainder part of that B zone. Would, should apply? Or not? Because it's near.
Park, you know, if you, you could get rid of the dog shop and put that inside that building there.
A hundred percent.
Building to that parking lot. I have, I have a big. I cannot park within, within a hundred yards of, of Big Y. I always have to park way down at the end. The only place I can pick is there's so many cars and everybody parks. The only place I can pick is there's so many cars and everybody parks every other spot apart. That's a congested parking area. It really is. Sounds like a good.
Yeah, it is.
What Jessica said, again, as Mister Morgan said, the CCC could be changing everything. But they, I know in Westfield Cannabis Connect, they are limited, they. Check their IDs, you have to show it on the way in, you have to show it on the way out. They are limited. They, and I know they worked at the beginning, all of them were limited to how many people could be in at once. It's, it's no longer like. Uh, when I actually got married, we got married at a movie station, I think when everybody. Nada opened or Neta?
Neta.
I mean, everybody remembers that it was a, what is it, it's unions.
Yeah, they used to pay a cop in front of the parking lot.
Anymore, most of places.
So.
But I understand where Mister Sutton's going from, that parking lot is paying the weird just getting in and out. You know, Billy's makes it difficult right there. I'm gonna, you know, again, like you said, Mister Doherty, I don't want to tell somebody that's not running business. You said that, Jessica, but again, that's why I think we should do it on a case by case basis and take all those factors. Into consideration when we make that, and we can put those types of restrictions in place.
And then you're leaving it also, I think. You know. We tend to be a pro, we try to be pro-business here and that we let sort of the market. Do what it's gonna do and any smart cannabis business owner. Is gonna, let's say, look at a small front shop on Gillette Corner and say, I can't accommodate more than three or five customers. In a half an hour here, this isn't gonna work. And they'll move on to another location.
Some, some will, some won't. That's, that's the.
Planning board at the special permitting process to make sure we do it right, Mister Sutton.
But why set ourselves up for failure? Just so we don't have to possibly change a map twenty years from now.
It, you know, it's, it's. I think we should stick clear in the B, and stick with the VR or the IR.
Alright, well, we know where the. Flashpoint is, right? So, um. I mean, I think it's worth looking at some of the properties in the VR, just, or the B, just to get a sense, um, a better sense. I mean, I don't. I, I just don't have the. How far along those go and which ones are covered by that district. So I need to look at those. Um, but whether it's. DR or BR or B. That'll be the discussion. Um, I assume that by law is pretty straightforward, we're just gonna strike. The section that says prohibited uses.
Yeah, probably want to take a spin through it, just make sure it's got what restrictions we think need to be in there.
Yeah, we can spend a little bit of time with the, um. CCC guidelines and just see if there's stuff that we want to incorporate. As we're doing this, um. Okay, anything else on the board? Mister Morgan.
You think, one is, I think there are, my, my personal preferences would be IIR. And that was similar to what they've done in Westfield. Um, as I stated earlier, and, but that being said, there was. BBR is a tough distinction, and I realize that there are places in B you wouldn't want it, but there may be places in B where you would want it. And, and markets will back me up on this, I'm sure, at my peril. There was one location that would have been perfect, absolutely perfect for a special medical or recreation. And it was the former Berkshire Bank in South London Town, that's now like his dog breeding place. Right, and that would have been perfect. They got a mall, they got parking, it's in front of Big Y, the park, all chips and stuff like that. But, you know, that would have been a good spot, and I believe that's zone B, that's not VR there, so. If you are gonna consider that, you know, there are ways that you could look at that as a permit grant authority. And I did forget to mention in my earlier comments that. You can prescribe limits, not just within the triple C limits, have your own limits from schools, churches, daycare. Whatever other restrictions you'd like, right, and put those in your bylaw, because I, again, wouldn't trust the triple T. To, to maintain any, any level of decorum around those, those numbers and they could change, which would have a side effect of changing our bylaw. I mean, even, and not to pile on the triple C, but their chairperson, Osriat, was suspended last week. Under, you know, cloudy circumstance, so, um. Do your own thing here for what, what's best for the town itself. I hear what Dave's saying, but I, it's, it's so hard to envision every per. In my time on the planning board, it's hard to envision every potential case. And say, well, that would work or that wouldn't work, or this space would work or would work. You could reconfigure parking or reconfigure two parcels in a strip mall, that would work. For certain types of retail business. It's up to you to decide whether the retail business, this retail business should be. In with other retail business or it should be, you know, treated differently and put in, in industrial, industrial restricted. That's, that's, oh, we have the planning board, and I also. Would just ask that, I, you, there is a zoning bylaw that we have, and the reason I propose that you put the limit to the number of dispensaries in the bylaw. There was a distance limit. Um, put into the zoning bylaw some years ago about used car lots. Thousand feet along the street, that should also be a requirement. If you have two, they shouldn't be next door to each other. They should be, I don't know, I call it a thousand feet along the street line or what have you, but please put that limit into your zone.
Too late.
Nope.
It seems if we restrict it to I and IR. Those zones are not fully built up, which would be very problematic to a, a small business coming in. If we have a vacant building. In a strip mall or standalone building in the B zone, there's opportunity that that person, that business couldn't fill.
Just let me back up for a minute because I'm not. The IR zone, at least the industrial part, is about as built up as it. It's, it's pretty built up. I, I mean, there's not too much room in there that I am aware of.
Which one?
In the industrial park. I mean, I suppose they're gonna connect it and that may make some more.
Need to look at the zone south, they kind of want.
Fair. Down there, that's not built up, that's true.
And that was actually the location of one of the applicants that we granted a special permit to. Developer for, for cultivation.
Yep.
And that, like, is what makes those zones appropriate for that is the largess of that need and that purpose and that use. This is, this is retail.
Business is business. Belongs in a business zone, it's retail, which is business, belongs in a business zone. Where there's existing facilities, potentially.
No, I, I agree with that point. I'm just not, like, I, there's not. I, I, I don't think the distinction between BR and IR, other than down here. Makes. Plays out, but the idea that when you have. An area of retail and there are existing buildings, that could be an opportunity, that makes sense to me, um. Um, so.
That it's all now and just. And one of the most profitable ones in East Hampton, North Hampton happens to be an old car dealership. That sat for decades and now all that pavement is being used to park cars for that business and it's.
And they're still restricted to occupancy limits, they're still restricted to parking spots. It won't be. There are still limitations built in. And you can drive a smaller truck.
I'll get, I'll get, I'll get something I can plug in. The thing, the thing about that is that, is wanting to put things on paper like that, but when it happens in the real world. Who's gonna check on it? Who's gonna stop it? Who's gonna call somebody to come check it out? They, they take more parking spots than they have coming.
That they have.
We do it all the time. We do it for restaurants, we do it for. Do it all the time.
A look back.
Come back in any year.
Who was, who was the guy that showed up at the town meeting who said that he could make so much money off a single year, he could pay for all the tax bill that the town needed to?
That was Mister Jared.
Wasn't that something like, so it's a pretty lucrative business, so building your own buildings, a major setback?
No, but I do think there's a benefit to the town.
Well, it was rhetorical.
Yes, okay, and I'll shut up.
Alright, let's, uh, anything else that we wanted? To take care of on this tonight before we continue it on for the next meeting? Okay. Alright, do I hear a, um. Motion to continue this public hearing until. Uh, seven thirty. On October tenth.
Dave's been a so moved.
We'll roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been a I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Okay. Alright. Six sixty-two A. A favorite, or second favorite continuance.
Uh, we are in.
And they go to concentration then, or?
Last night, they presented the peer review, what you're mine. No new engineering or other designs. Has been submitted. Yes, so I would say it still hangs in limbo.
My inclination then is to chip it out. Ten twenty-four, yeah. And, I mean, I assume somebody may have to go put down to it, but. So why don't we continue it out until seven forty-five? Uh, on twenty-fourth.
Seven forty-five, October twenty-fourth.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to continue six sixty-two A College Highway to seven forty-five on the twenty-fourth? Dave's been a so moved. Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Dave's been a I.
Jessica Thornton.
We lost. I can't say. Alright. Flight plan review.
Give you two seconds to check up on notice.
Uh, you know what, actually.
Second week.
Alright, so why don't, you know, um. Um, why don't we jump to, um. Why don't we jump to the greens because I know it's Bob, Bob and Diana on Zoom. We can at least let them. Get off of Zoom, if they wish, they can always stay.
So, first, we are. On behalf of Dory Realty Holding LLC, uh, to release lots sixteen seventeen. From the covenant move bond and. Lots twenty-nine and thirty-four, the two estate lots. At the subdivision. Swap those two. Uh, notes, uh, his records show the both of lots are still owned by Dory and neither have building permits. I'm okay with this request.
So we're releasing sixteen and seventeen and swapping in twenty-nine and thirty-four.
Yes, which are higher value. They're like the general manager here. Sorry to be named later.
Um, alright, do I hear a, a motion to allow for removal of lots sixteen and seventeen? From, um, the Greens East from the Covenant and Lewa Bond and replacing. That with lots twenty-nine and thirty-four. On the Greens East. Dave's been a so moved.
Take us in your second.
We'll roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Dave's been a I.
Take us in, right.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Okay.
Thank you very much. There is a, or rather, we have, um.
I did things submitted.
Draft. Excuse me, uh, agreement that attorney begging with you.
Thank you. Alright. I don't know if there's anybody else on the meeting waiting for something. Why don't we do Depot Square? If there's someone on the meeting, it's probably about that, right? Alright. Oh, and you, yeah. Have looked to see that you weren't here. Sorry about that. Seeing everybody leaving and not paying attention to the fact that you were still sitting.
Yeah, I know it's gone through a few hands in our office, but, um. Here now, so, um. I guess for the record, Fleet Craywell Vec Associates, um. This project has, uh, just to put it kind of briefly, has a lot of history, um, dating back to. Um, the early two thousand teens from when it was, um, approved as a project and then built out. In phases, and then as. Each phase was getting built, um, there was money allocated through a line of credit. And, um, as phase one, so there was a certain amount. Value, um, held in a line of credit and. It, I guess one of the, uh, before we start talking about that, it's, it's important to reference some, some information that was heard at previous meetings. In the planning board, um, uh, so we have a letter from. Randy Brown, who was the DPD director at the time, dated February twentieth, twenty thirteen, and it references the. It references the, the letter of credit for the work to be completed. Uh, which was being held for the phase one to be shifted from the phase one to the phase two. And, and he says in there, and I guess it's just to kind of narrow our, the focus of what, of what that letter of credit was for. Um, he says, applies to stormwater control and site stabilization only in accordance with the current stormwater. Uh, quality regulations. So that line of credit was. Being held to ensure that the stormwater. Control features and the site stabilization would, would happen, and that's what that money was allocated for. Um. And that, that comes from the letter dated February twentieth, twenty thirteen, um. From, uh, Randy. Um, and then, you know, subsequent to that, we have, there was a letter, March twenty-first, March twenty-first, twenty fourteen. That said that, you know, from the planning board that moved, that allocated the, the. Um, the money or the letter of credit from phase one to include phase two. And there was some, um, calculations done at the time and. There was some um calculations done at the time and um there was, there was, um, I believe uh as part of that same uh, as part of that original letter, that letter of credit covered the costs for phase two. So there wasn't, they didn't have to increase the, the line of credit or letter of credit or anything because the, the estimates were still below that, that amount. So since um, so since that time, it's been basically sat at, sat while phase two was under construction, um that letter of credit, so um over the past, I guess, several years, the project has been obviously built out. The stormwater has been reviewed a number of times. I know my office has done a number of different calculations at various different times in regard to the as-built conditions and the volumes within those basins and the conditions of the basins. And the request that's in front of the planning board now would be to essentially uh reduce that letter of credit from what it is now, which is um one, a hundred seventy-five thousand down to ten thousand for any of the outstanding items that may come up as far as um the closeout or the finalization of the project, so right now, uh, you know, the, the, the site is, is substantially built out, built out. Uh, the stormwater features have been, you know, functioning for a number of years. Um, we do have a letter from uh Randy, uh more, the most recent letter from Randy which is dated uh September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, in which, you know, in regard to stormwater, he, you know, expresses concern with detention basin five, which is the only thing that is, you know, part of that is brought up in his letter and basin number five, which is one of the, the basins out behind the properties there, which, you know, has sufficient volume, but for, you know, for whatever reason, whether it's maintenance or um otherwise, you know, drains a little, drains slower than the other basin, so it holds water longer. Um
Much longer.
Um, I'm not sure. Not sure uh if it, you know, to any, do you, any?
My mental number's hard to quantify.
Yeah, it's hard to, I mean, if you were there today, probably we got, you know, a bunch of rain last night, it probably has water in it now. How quickly does it go down? I don't think anyone's ever, you know, counted the days for it to go down. Um, but the volume is there, so for a hundred year storm, the volume within the basin is there.
Based upon the original design though, and the original layout prior to it being built out kind of differently from the original plans, is that a factor?
Um, the, so the stormwater would be based on the original design, yeah.
Right, so if what was installed, whether size, uh, shape of building um landscape of differences could very well make potential reason not made to handle what it ended up being just.
Um, yeah, depending on where and what the changes um occurred, you know, whether, you know, half the site that was supposed to go to one now goes to the other or, you know, where, where's, you know, where the line is.
Do you have a sense of what it would take to figure out the problem with basin number five? Not, not fixing, just diagnosing.
Yeah, um, it's could be a number of things because, you know, we deal with these stormwater basins all the time, especially right now, this year is, seems to be the worst year I've, I've ever dealt with, just because every week we're getting like two inches. It seems like we're getting like two inches of rain like every week, so nothing is able to, you know, take all that water to put.
We can handle a hundred year storm, it should handle a couple of day storm.
Yeah, yeah, and it does, and it will, a hundred years, you know, all the rain.
Based upon stormwater design standards back from the early two thousand teens, right?
Um, from, yes, so the, the, the original, the original.
I'm just thinking because they've been updated recently to accommodate the fact that we are getting a lot more rain, that
No, so, so one thing.
The appropriateness of that basin as designed in two thousand and, let's just say, ten
Yeah.
um, for those stormwater requirements for a differently designed buildings, buildings and differently designed landscapes and man swells and pitches and all this stuff. Yeah, so it seems like we would need to really get in there and figure that out.
Just the, the, the whole storm thing is, you know, something we deal with, especially I, as the engineer on a lot of these things, we deal with that all the time. One thing I've noticed is that, you know, Southwick has in, has increased their, their rainfall event, you know, pretty significantly. But it also, you have to look at it from a pre and post standpoint where we're matching the discharge rates from the pre-develop, from the pre-develop with the post development features. So, just, you know, rising tide, let's all, so, so.
Last year was pretty dry, this year it's pretty wet.
Yeah, it's, that's a year to year thing.
Did something last, same thing last year and the year before that.
Yeah, no.
It's an ongoing issue, not just this new year with a major rain events.
Yeah, no, I'm, no, I was just speaking generally, like pre and post, the, the pre increased, but the post also, you know, so it's a higher number that you have to hit with the post. So the stormwater change, I guess the whole point of that was to say that the, the stormwater uh designs that we, that we have designed you know, changed slightly, not as much as you would think. You know, when you think, oh, the, the rainfall event went from six and a half inches to eleven inches, you know, something like that.
And here's my issue, which is I'm very hesitant to release money when I don't know what the problem is.
Yeah.
Because it seems to me, and I, I, you do this, John can certainly offer his thoughts, but if you have to go in and reconstruct that basin, that's not an insignificant job. Right, I mean, if there has to be a state, an overhaul, if it was, what is wrong, I mean, there's that's not an insignificant job, that's, that's some money behind that.
Sure.
Um but it may not need that, but I mean, I have to, we have to consider the whole range of things when you don't know what the diagnosis is, right? So um, it strikes me that the request is better made after the diagnosis has been made as to what is the problem.
With basin five, yeah. Yeah, we can certainly do some uh investigation. Like I said, the volume, yeah, the volume is there, it does drain, it's just, you know, we have to see what the soil, it's, it comes down to the soil condition.
No, I mean, I, if, if I guess I would say this, and I'll talk to Randy or I'll have John talk to Randy, I'll talk to John, whatever the case may be, and figure out what his thoughts specifically are on that. I mean, I, I just right now, as I sit here with the information that I have, I'm a bit hesitant without knowing more. Um, it doesn't mean, I mean, the answer may be that it's acceptable and it's within an acceptable limit and that it just runs a little differently than the others and you just, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Um, the answer may be something different though, I mean, so I, I just want to get that answer before we're releasing money. Um, and get a better sense of um you know, what that, what should be held on to, what the issue is. Um, it's also probably uh if you wouldn't mind sending a copy of that, you say February thirteenth letter?
Sure, yeah.
Um, just forwarding that on or even just throwing it in an email, the date. Um, and in your, in your position on it, so that can be forwarded to Randy and then we can kind of see whether that fits, gets that work, so that's one less thing on the taking away from what gets released.
Okay.
So I just think we're not there yet, but um, I, I mean, sounds like we're very few things left, at least on the stormwater side, but
Yeah.
Other side of the story, I think, but stormwater.
Yeah.
Um
I can add just one layer detail, uh, because I honestly don't recall if John Tomaszewski John, John, excuse me, uh, presented to the planning board or if that was just a separate meeting I had with Randy related specifically to the constructed volumes uh of the basin, so they went through uh an analysis on performance to make sure it was adequate, and I think prior to that was an, uh, an impervious surface review which in triplex buildings had more impervious between the driveway and the roof areas than what ended up being a series of duplexes that did. So at least according to the standard that the development was constructed, I think that half of the equation um is uh answered. The remaining.
So they were designed to perform appropriately, it's just this particular one.
I, I think that's fair to say.
All right, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I have some information that I might like to share.
And you could just, yeah, tell us your name and address, that would be great.
My name is Mike Parent, Two Junction Station Row. I'm a, I'm the uh vice president of the Rusties and the thing that the gentleman said is draining quite well. I'll let you speak on that picture to share.
When is this from?
Uh, that's from pond five that he said is draining with.
The when?
Oh, um, that was sometime in the winter, I can show you a picture from today.
January second, twenty twenty.
But it's on my.
Yeah.
And the reality is supposed to drain within seventy-two hours and it has not been draining. And this has caused a backup throughout the whole, I can pass that around.
Yeah.
You can take it, pass it if you has caused a problem with the whole place because all of our other stormwater problems go back to that, for instance, where I live at two, because that pond's not draining behind me is not draining either because the silt has built up so that it doesn't reach the drain anymore because that pond has been backing up and not draining. Now, behind that pond right there, five, is about a fifty foot wall. And if that wall ever gets softened because it's not draining, it's going to go down onto the Westfield housing and all those houses down below. I mean, there's a fifty foot wall there that's blocking it. The other issue that is a big issue for us, and I'm just gonna pass these around if you can untake one. The developer has shorted us over a hundred ninety-two trees that were supposed to have been, that are on the as-built plan. So the cost of those trees is someplace in the range of two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars.
I think the issue on this is not so much whether there's an issue. Well, I think the, I think there may be a dispute about the value or what, you know.
There's one item on there that's in dispute and that's the last one that they put down tree.
So, but I think the issue, at least as we're here tonight, is more about um whether or not this sum of money covers that issue or not.
Okay.
Um I would suspect that that is covered by some um some, some of money somewhere, because there's more than just this, isn't there?
I think there's a conservation uh token ten thousand dollar, so, because there's a very limited
uh resource area impacts along, you know, right along.
So is this all that is left is this, is the stormwater bond and then the small conservation bond? There's nothing else related, I know there was a whole bunch of issues with the with other stuff on the property, um, there's nothing to cover.
Not that I know of, but I can certainly.
All right, so you know, whether it's an issue or not and whether um the issue is, is whether this covers it or not, right? I mean, we only have, we have, this only applies to a certain scope. We have to figure out whether it's within the scope, it doesn't mean that you weren't, you know, you're not right about it, it just means the remedy may be something different, so that's all.
The, the problem again is that um it's, you know, like that ball rolling downhill, it just keeps building up speed and because the trees aren't put there that would absorb some of the water they're not there. A hundred ninety-two trees that should be there that would absorb water and help with the flood and the other problems aren't there. Um, this is backed up, that pond, pond one and one A are also backed up, don't drain to the extent that they should, those are the ones at the very bottom of the hill. Um, I know we mentioned that this was a bad year, but this is not nearly as bad as it could be and a lot of other places are having. And if that drain, that thing is not draining and we get a really bad storm that whole wall on the thing is going to go and it's going to wipe out those houses below it and it's going to wipe out the, uh, Westfield um housing uh down there. So, I mean, our concern in the trees are so someplace in the range of forty, fifty-two thousand dollars when you talk about the delivery and labor to put them in, so that was just the trees alone. And so I think it's all part of the same ball of wax, so to speak, and that the trees could help. The pond's not draining, the trees could help absorb some of that water. They're not there to do that.
So, um, just to add to the tree or the planting discussion, um, we did go out on site and I know that the uh, the, the owner has installed a number of additional plantings throughout the site. Um, it's just, you know, whether or not they're in, they, they match the, the tree list that was on the plan set is obviously the, the question, um, but there were a significant amount of additional vegetation and we went around the site and um, added to the uh as-built plan a number of locations where there was plantings installed that weren't on the original plans. So landscaped islands uh with, you know, not necessarily tree like shade tree species, but lower shrubby species, grasses and things like that, so we took, you know, a lot of um photos um showing where they're, where they're located on the, on the site that shows, you know, the landscaped islands and things like that.
Well, so here's the way I think about it, which is um if we are let's, let's focus it solely on the request for the redock. That's what we're here for.
Right, yeah, I agree.
So I'm looking at, at it as two things, one is I need to know whether as a general matter the tree plantings are covered by that sum of money.
True.
There seems to be a dispute about that, so I, you know, I want to get more information and figure that out. The second part about it is I, I'm not inclined, and this is just me speaking, I'm not inclined if if the lack of tree planting is contributing to the drainage issue. Um, as
Mr. Parent. My parent, yes.
As Mr. Parent just said, um it, to me, that's, that's a barrier to meet the stormwater requirements, right? I mean, I, I'm not, if that is, if, if something, if it made, if it's not covered, if it's not technically covered by this, but it is contributing to the the failure or the inefficiency of the system I'm hard pressed to say that that's not covered because it is impacting the stormwater system, but that's just my personal opinion.
I know from designing these things, you know, the, where you locate the trees on the site doesn't play into that.
I'm not saying it does.
Yeah.
I'm saying that if that, and I'm just saying what Mr. Parent had said, so if that is actually true and that is So if that is actually true, and that is shown to be something that is, you know, if there's some. Randy weighs in or someone else weighs in and says that's. Contributing to it. That's going to push me to say, well, you know, even if it doesn't technically cover, that seems to be impacting and contributing to the. To the inefficiency, so I would be hesitant to release the money in that. I'm not saying it does. I'm not saying it. You know, I, I don't know enough about it. I would, I would need to know more, but that's where my head is going on those, on those issues, just so you know. Anything?
Kind of an agreement.
Okay. So, my inclination right now is to put this on for the next meeting. And we'll try over the next two weeks to get some more information and, um, be in a better place that we can. Act on it. I mean, I don't wanna hold it unnecessarily, but I do think we need to figure out. What the problem is or what the, you know, what the potential scope of that problem is before we. Get a better, I just need, I need more information to do that about it, so, um, and I'll try to reach out to Randy.
So, so just to kind of, just to clarify, the additional information would be to, number one, I guess. Define what the letter of credit. I guess is being held or is assigned to.
So, yeah, I would say get either a ref by reference or by scanning that letter to Randy. And say your position is that. Um, the scope of this is, is, does not cover the plants. Right? I mean, that's, I, and Rob, to some, to some degree, I think Rob said it in an email, did I s- see that?
You did.
Somewhere. I think I saw it in an email somewhere, but get him that letter, so there's a specific reference, he can go back and look at it, and he can figure out what he wants to say. So that's one, um, and then secondly, whatever information you can get. Identify the problem. And, uh, you know, is going to help define what money can be raised, so that would be number two.
Is there anything we as a, a condominium organization? Any other information that you need from us or?
I can't think of any. You know, I mean, in my mind, and certainly, you know, you can go out and submit these. If you see issues, submit them, but a lot of this is more technical, right? And, and not necessarily within the realm of you folks, um, and so. Having them offer their positions and having DBW lay in, I think is sort of the primary players here.
I know Randy was up there the other day taking pictures when the pond had.
Yep.
Water in it, so.
Yep, um, so, alright. Thank you, anything else or?
No, no, this one, so continue to.
I will put it on the agenda for the next meeting. It doesn't, it's not set for a time, it's not a public hearing, but it'll be on the agenda and, um. You know, if y'all are here, we'll try to get to it sooner, and I'll try to pay attention to the fact that you're here, so that you're not sitting here.
Gentlemen, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Takes a lot of time and effort being aboard.
I would say something, but I get too much humor from it, so I re. Some solace in that, right, Jessica? Oh, I took all your stuff, didn't I?
Yeah, you just stack it in there.
Fantastic. Nah, give me a minute. Thank you. Are you sitting here just for forty-two? Are you leaving after that?
I'm sure he wants to know about the master plan.
Um, yeah, well, let's go there. Let's go to the master plan advisor committee composition appointment team. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Okay, so the, uh, action items following last meeting were to, uh, reach out to. Uh, members Patrick Job and Michael McMahon to see if they wish to continue, uh, to serve. National Advisory Committee as resident members. Uh, Mr. Job has indicated he would like to do so. And, and Mr. McMahon quietly declines. Uh, the other action item, uh, came out the direction discussions would be that. Town Clerk Michelle Hill requests the board move to extend the term. Of master plan advisor three members until November first.
We already. Okay, we already dealt with, um, Marcus very dealt with the volumes. Uh, alright, so McMahon is on there through economic development? Okay. I mean, I, you know, I suppose. Oh, no, okay, um, and, alright, so do I hear a motion to. Uh, extend the term for the master plan advisory committee to November first of twenty twenty-three? Dave's being a solo. Do I hear a second? Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Dave's being aye.
Just the door and I.
Okay. Alright, um.
Did we already move?
We have not done just so, um, do I hear a motion to? And we, we checked with Michelle, and she was okay with this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to convert Patrick Job? Uh, convert the positions held by Patrick Job from a. School committee, thank you, uh, representative to a resident representative. Dave's being a solo.
Second.
Or do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Dave's been aye. Okay, so that's all set, uh, just let Pat know. So you can go to the next meeting if he chooses, um. And we will, uh. Mike McMahon submitted a formal resignation, or was he, he resigned from the EDC? He was not reappointed to the EDC. Okay, um. Okay, so, you know, we should probably just do it by motion, just so that it's formal, um, that a motion, uh, to accept. The resignation, I mean, it's, it's, he's.
We were asked not to do that.
No, no, no.
And we didn't wanna mess with the number.
Hold on. No, 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 we wanted.
We didn't wanna do anything that would change the number of committee members that we were authorized to change the designation. That we were advised against, a reconfiguration of it as it stood.
That was before, well. Do they all need to go against one in again? Or is the extension of the term covering?
We are in a bit of a territory, but.
We'll leave that alone. I don't know the answer to it, but we'll leave it alone. Forty-two depot.
Okay, so we are in received. This is on a H apparently. I'm a letter.
You can take that job anytime you like.
This is from our local associates, uh, from. Dear Chairman Dorian Board Members, on behalf of the applicant and property owner, Right Hand Clyde Real Estate LLC, care of Mr. John Poggiaro. Our Lovac Associates Incorporated is here requesting a three-year extension on the approved special permit. Site plan approval, wellhead protection district special permit, first excavation special permit. And stormwater management room permit issued by the Town and South Planning Board in December two thousand twenty-one. For the above referenced project site in the south of Monticello. Town South Planning Board finding stand decision associated with the site has been recorded under the Hammond County Registered Agent Book. Twenty-four, three eighty, page three forty-two. Thanks to the increase in construction material costs and interest rates. Construction has not yet commenced onsite, but the applicant is looking to get started. At that age of this request letter, you will find a copy of the original reported Town and South Planning Board finding of this. As required, a copy of this request for a three-year extension of the aforementioned decision has been selected, we'll try and be via emails to the Town and South Planning Board. We are hereby requesting to be placed on the planning board's next available agenda. Should you have any questions or comments regarding this request, please contact our office at your earliest needs. Town Council has confirmed that this can be managed under, uh, as a. Public meetings item and not approved, uh, public hearing. They recommend that the maximum, since you not exceed the original. Excuse me, the two-year term under our. Under our bylaws, first time.
And, but the, we are allowed to grant an extension?
Despite what, um, you read in our bylaws.
And the statute.
One eighty-five dash eight, there was a special permit.
So, just to kinda. Add, it's just, obviously, we went through the whole process approved, and it's existing permit. I'm not sure when the existing permit would be set to expire, but, you know, three years. But if the maximum would be two years, we'd obviously be looking for the maximum. I, I have the original permit, yeah.
Yeah, what's the date?
It was recorded on one thirty-one, twenty-two, uh, filing filed with the town clerk December twenty-nine. Uh, one more. So we go all the way to the beginning.
Well, you gotta, it's our twenty eighth, uh, twenty days, right?
Yep, uh, well, from when it gets submitted. And of course, on the twenty-nine.
I can't run hell, jeez. It's a file, so. Yeah, so the next one's, uh. It expires in January of twenty twenty-four. And what's, can I see the letter? Thank you. Not sure how much I buy that the applicant is looking to get started when he has a for-sale sign up there. There certainly has been an increase in construction to cost of the insurance. And I don't disagree with that either, um, but, um.
I mean, it's a two-year extension from, um, twenty-four, so that puts us, that would put it to twenty-six. So three years really from.
Twenty minutes between.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's like two and a, two and three.
Alright, uh, board thoughts on this?
I mean, I'm. Challenged by the idea that, you know, according to the bylaw, if we can do it for good cause. And that seems to be, you know, the question was, is it good cause? And do we believe that that's the only reason why it hasn't happened and the for-sale sign? And, but I also, and not necessarily. Against the idea of it being built, and if a year of extension would help, then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. I. You know, my, my general belief. Is that the landscape in the construction industry has probably changed decently in the last two years since January of.
Twenty-one, I mean, certainly since twenty-one, but this, this would, this would.
I mean, I think, I think it's changed decently enough, they're, they're, you know. People changing their desire to get into projects based on construction costs and. And interest rates and layers. So, I mean, we've seen them, we've seen them in front, um, but, so, I mean, I don't, I, I don't disagree with that at all. I guess the question is whether that's good cause to extend.
I mean. So there, there, there's an approved set of plans, and so the plan was vetted here, and. Whether, you know, there's a for-sale sign or not, that set of plans wouldn't change. Alright, so that set of plans.
Oh, great, I mean, but it's, it's also, right, I mean.
To some generous argument to suggest that they're gonna start building right as soon as possible, right, like.
I mean, I, but, I mean, the, the other, the flip. Flip of it is that it's not, it's gonna be some expense, but it's now that you, you, you've run through the plan, you have the plans. It's not a huge expense to come back and get another permit if you so desire, right? I mean, that's not, given where the applicant stands right now, that's not. It's heavier lift as it would be to do a new permit application, right? I mean, they have the plans, they have. Um, there's certainly gonna be some costs associated with it. It's not insignificant cost, but it's not the same as doing a new application for, uh, the development.
Which, you know, construction costs have changed so much to give just cause for us to extend the permit. Does that, you know, change the landscape of our approval and? two years, if the master doesn't adhere to our master plan down the road and will we be making a new plan adhere to new requirements?
Well, yeah. The, yeah, the type of development, the type of development it is, is obviously it's, you know, townhouse multi-unit buildings, which I think any town is really looking for, to be honest with you, something that's not a you know, eight hundred thousand dollar single-family home, which seems to be like the going rates these days, which is uh something a little more affordable for somebody to get into, really.
With my inclination is to allow for an extension for one year, which would comply with what the master general laws allows for um for commencement of construction, right? The sound like is, is and I always screw this up, but I'm right on that, right? The master general laws allows for three years. Southwick has chosen to do it in two years. So I think my inclination would be to allow for the more lenient timeframe of the general laws and not give the entire request of two years. Good. So that would be an additional time. I mean, I I'm personally not all that convinced that, or to do extensions, but if Mark says we can, I don't see why we can't keep doing extensions, right?
Well, that would be the follow-up question would be like, could you extend? Extend the extension? You know, if it comes to a year, a year later.
Construction costs are too high, well, then obviously you're not going to be building it anytime soon and you can come back with a new special.
Right, I mean, I I, I don't want to create this precedent where, you know, market changes and then we just keep getting extension, extension, extension. That's not, I don't want to do that because I don't think that that's fair. But you know, I do think giving a little bit of wiggle room to allow for, you know, if things calm back down and you can get shovels on the ground. You know, I mean, the other part about it, remember, I mean, it's not finish the project within two years. It's commence the project within two years. I mean, that's.
Yeah, start. It's the start of, the start date, not.
So, but but I mean, I think my inclination is, there's been enough change over the last year and a half, so in my mind at least, as a totally uneducated layman in this area, but it seems like there is, just from reading the news and what have you, that I think I'm willing to kick it out to what the general laws were gonna have. Do one more here. Anyone else?
No, I agree with that thoughts on that.
A fair and wise.
Um, my inclination as of right now is that that's going to be the end of it though. Um, you know, I'm not, I'd be less, much less inclined to kick it out farther.
Yeah, without good cause.
Um, without some change, good cause, other than. Uh, so, yeah, do I hear a motion to extend the deadline for lapse of the special permit for forty-two Depot Street to extend for one for a year from whatever date it may be that it lasts. Days being someone. A roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Days being I.
To coasting, all right.
All right.
So for that particular motion, I need to prepare a document that we can sign, although this is not a separate hearing, apparently we can extend the term, it still has to go for twenty days down to the concrete. So if the next meeting will have that prepared. Sign.
Okay. I, I'm gonna leave that to town council. I offered no opinion in this whatsoever. Um, I suppose we should finally go back to six Hummer Lane, right? Let's get that handled. Unless we want to go onto something else.
Well, blunt with everybody, we're gonna have all these puzzles, I think an email from uh, Mr. Atugedo indicating that we were going to change some technical parameters, but not the location or size of the array. And because some of the submitted requirements include those technical parameters, you needed to give us a new set, should be here for the nineteenth.
Okay.
We checked three times, it's not here. We do have some answers, but we can go into it.
Next meeting, that is sounds fantastic. Have a good night, Philippe. All right. Uh, A and R. Let's do um College Highway.
We're looking at the mixed use development. Dr. Wallace. Permit, a short while back, this A and R combines the three parcels. People want.
This is the one where he had to get the other parcel there. Um, that was the doctor's office. Is that right?
I don't believe so. This, this is just the three contiguous ones north of the other office.
Was it one from the old? Uh, yeah, it was the doctor's office, right? And it was actually resident. Yeah, all right, nevermind. All right, go ahead. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this out. No, didn't we attend to?
The front next to the green, right? Then we changed that, we changed the zone.
Well.
We changed the zone. Walls came in to change the zone. That doctor's office was residential, I believe, and they were using it as a doctor's office for years and years and years. There's the one that it butted the greens and we changed it to.
Okay.
Not but that, or no, but it the property in between the greens. I don't know, whatever it was, but I thought we changed it.
So, uh, we're, we're looking for a
Just haven't seen your moment here.
Uh, so we are adding, we're combining parcels here.
Okay.
Taking everything ever so much more beyond performance.
So zero, seven, seven, two, and seven, seven, four.
Yes.
We did zero couple. The. I didn't realize we had a number zero and.
We have lots of them on College Highway.
Um, all right, do I, uh, yeah, this is combining all three into one.
Yep.
He owns all three. Uh, motion to endorse the approval, not required plan for zero, seven, seventy-two, and seven, seventy-four College Highway. Days being a solo move. Do I hear a seconds? We're roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I. Days being I.
They're crossing around.
Just support and I.
Okay.
Let me start by the, the next.
Oh, yeah. Just in case. Put it in front. The first thing I'm gonna say is I've always written right on top because it's just like, yeah. Sometimes.
Like a major deep skin over with the table.
We're starting putting stuff on it. Okay. Have to make him dress up a bit. I'm, I'm not, I want tails.
Hot micro then tails, I might go for it.
Uh, all right, A and R for sixty-three A Congamon Road.
Yes, so we are looking at the solar facility, nearest Congamon Road. Uh, the proposed division is to cleave, if you will, the permanent solar component from the remaining acreage. Um, although they do have access roads that remain outside of them.
You have any good wish?
So they're splitting off, they want to make a parcel just for the fenced solar area access to it. Essentially, you have a solar parcel and surrounding it in a U shape would be the remaining acreage at this property.
And they have frontage?
Yeah.
Do so? Where's the frontage?
Yeah, up here in Congamon Road. So there's freedom, that microphone's where you get.
That's okay, you can, that's enough up top there?
Two hundred feet. And we're in.
Oh, it's just the, it's the size of the property.
Yeah.
I got it, okay. All right.
So in reviewing this plan, um I, it's not, I don't think it's, it's not pertinent to this specific uh, motion to endorse or not, but we may want to coordinate with the permittee for this site. To paraphrase Attorney Beglans, um conclusions, uh, it, it appears that the apparent intent of the development was to construct it as we see here, um, and as we saw on the filing plans, we have this area of AC zone. Um, um, so the southern extent of the solar array, um and the applicant didn't ask for a waiver from the required separation distance. Um, so as a meeting item, uh, the inclination that Mr. Beglaine had would be to coordinate with the permittee to.
What's going on here? All me. I'm not doing it. If you, if you well, I should say, I suppose you can A and R, but then you're voiding your permit, aren't you?
Shouldn't know, no.
We require most of our solar and parcels to have some sort of distance.
Well, that was, that was the root of my discussion specific as after review. This is all industrial restricted up in this part, so the separation distance um, doesn't apply. We have greater than a hundred and fifty feet, you know, to any residential use or district.
But that won't be the case if you cleave off these other two parcels.
They'll still have to be.
The, we'll call it the deficiency is where they, they should have asked for that, uh, a waiver from that down here in the AC zone. But that's the way it was shown on the plans, um, and it reviewed by the board. So it doesn't appear that there's anything, we'll call it fundamentally deficient or unfair. It's, it's the matter of noting that in the decision for future use of the properties.
So let me get it straight in my head. So this, the solar is in an IR. Right?
Yes.
They're splitting off two sections. Is one still IR?
Uh, yeah, so technically this is one entire parcel.
Oh, they're just doing it as one. Oh, okay.
And that's the zone line.
Okay, so they're splitting off a parcel that's going to be both AC and IR. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And refresh me what the requirements were for the solar. As far as.
That separation distance. A hundred, well, I should open up the language very specific with about a hundred fifty feet magic number. In this case, it's relevant to the agricultural conservation district.
So they're looking to free, like, chop this off along this funky U shape here.
I don't understand how much.
Yes, I know. So this is the parcel they want to create. That is completely, and it's not smart timing, is it? This is one of those things I would say absolutely not. And then we're, we're making that particular parcel, the line of it is the edge of the solar facility, not even an additional twenty-five, thirty, fifty feet.
You can't come in, ask for something that requires setbacks from neighbor property. And then get rid of the setbacks.
Yeah, for one second, I want to open.
The setback should be a minimum of a hundred fifty feet unless waived by the planning board. So right now they are required under the special permit to have a minimum of a hundred fifty foot setback between the solar and any agricultural that it abuts. Now they are creating an agricultural property that it abuts, that is well less than zero feet of setback.
So I think and please let's have a discussion and dialogue. Uh, I think the clarification, and I'm, I'm sorry, let me find that language first, before I run out of my mouth. In cases where the parcel is in a residential zone, it's not, right, uh, or abuts agricultural zones, residential zones, parkland or conservation land, setbacks shall be a minimum of a hundred fifty feet. So it's the zone line that, uh, is the meat and potatoes of our, of our discussion, right? Uh, that heavy gray line uh, towards the southern portion. And that was the so that line's not changing. The location, the use, the location of the use isn't changing either in relation to that zone.
Oh, it's a buts that's I think I always had it in my head that it would have butted a property, not a zone, so that's her is, it, so the answer is we were wrong, not the applicant. Well, the applicant was wrong, but we were wrong for missing it.
Well, we also would never, we would never would have issued a special permit for it if there were two occasion.
No, no, no.
Right next to it, but no buffer.
No, 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 it's not. We did it. Oh. It's just, that's weird. I wonder if that's correct.
I'm sorry.
What, what's going on? A budding is zone is not really, I don't know, that language is weird.
Yes.
Like, um, so the language in the bylaw talks about a budding a zone, not a budding a property that is zoned as what, you know what I mean? So I, I don't know.
Well.
How to read that, I suppose. I always took it as a property. As you can.
I'm sorry, let, let, let me read it a different way. Let me read it, uh, in favor of your interpretation. Uh, it just says the setback shall be a minimum of a hundred fifty feet unless waived by the planning board. Yeah, I just. Okay, so that would be from a property line. So right.
So here, I guess this is what I'm saying, right? So this thing comes in. And we look at it and we say, assuming this is agricultural.
Yeah.
So this, I'm assuming this is a hundred fifty feet or more.
Yes.
And we look at it and we say, all right, meets the requirements, we're good. Now they're coming in for an A and R and changing this into, if they came in with this plan right here, if this, it was already in, if they A and R'd it first, they couldn't do it. That to me, I don't know how you don't void your special permit at that point, yeah.
There's a representative for the applicant online, I don't know if we wanted to hear from that before you do that sort of.
I mean, I, you know, in, in all honesty, I don't care about this particular property. I care about the idea that if we are if all that matters is the order in which you do something to get around the bylaws, that's problematic for them. Not to say that they did it intentionally, but if that's. Not to say that they did it intentionally, but if that's just precedent that's being said, that's a problem. We just have to do this this way and then we can just cut it off however we want to and we're fine. That's not a good. I that's a problem. I mean, I also have a slight problem with the idea that the access road is not in the property, right, because that would any special permit where that was an issue would have language about, about easements and maintenance and whatever else. Which is in place, and now it's on another property. Yeah, I don't know. My brain and Mark's brain are not in sync today. I can't imagine how many hours that conversation was, so he was okay with this.
I, I agree with your read of them on a particular. In many ways, well, granted, what amounts to is an A and R showing by, showing zoning violations.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, just A and R to do what you want afterwards. You weren't able to do it at the beginning, but if you A and R'd it first, so A and R it afterwards. That doesn't seem right. All right, my inclination is to continue this onto the next meeting, and I'll talk to Mark.
So regrettably. Yep, I, we do have Ms. Bartlett on Zoom.
Well, I mean. Yeah, is, is, is there a representative of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, hi, see if I can put my video on here. This is Bethany Bartlett, I'm General Counsel of Kearsarge Energy. And thank you for reviewing our A and R plan. The purpose of the plan really is to allow us to purchase from our landlord at the premises that we currently lease. So essentially, that solar facility was constructed in accordance with the permits, we've been there for, oh, I don't know, six years or so, and at this point in time, we've made an arrangement to just purchase the land from our landlord. So what we've done is created this A and R plan, which shows the bounds of our fence. And then, excuse me, extended out the frontage on Congamon Road to the two hundred foot requirement.
So I don't, did you hear our discussion that we were having, I mean, I don't I don't necessarily have an issue with the concept, right, it doesn't bother me that you want to carve this out and buy it from the landlord. Where I have an issue is that it's basically saying, and not that this is unintentionally, but it's basically saying, you know, this, we can, we can come in with a set of plans, get approval, and then A and R the property or cut up the property in such a way that it wouldn't have gotten approval had it gone in that way, because this, the way this is being proposed would not get approval, couldn't get approval under the bylaws. And so I just, I it, it strikes me that, and part of this, I think, is to protect you to some degree, which is, it strikes me that if you if you cut this down and eliminate a hundred fifty foot setbacks from a neighboring property with this agriculturally zoned, you've, you've arguably voided your permit. Now, our town council seems to suggest otherwise, I do want to talk to him more about it, but I I, I tha- that's my first inclination, when I see this, is that you've you didn't get a waiver from the planning board to not have a hundred fifty foot setbacks, and now you don't have a hundred fifty foot setbacks, so I don't think you're in compliance with the terms of the permit or the bylaw, because I know there's that, I, I don't have the permit in front of me, but I can almost guarantee that there's a condition in there that you need to comply with all the terms of the bylaws, we put that in just about, I think, every single decision I've ever written. So my concern would be that you've now avoided your permit. That, so I we're in a bit of a pickle. Because with A and Rs, you have to do them within a certain amount of time, or they get granted automatically. I don't know when this came in.
Uh, we have, we have three weeks until the next meeting, so the time will lapse.
And we do have three weeks, that's right.
I'm happy to suggest the, we'll call it the cleanest alternative.
Well, the cleanest alternative is probably to get an extension from the applicant, right?
Or requested withdrawal, we couldn't waive any recent little fee. A lot of time for.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, Ms. Bartlett, I don't know if there is a certain sense of urgency to get this done, but it strikes me that it's in everybody's best interest to kind of make sure that we're doing it the right way and not causing a problem.
No, agreed, we do have a purchase and sale agreement with our landlord with an anticipated closing of the end of this month, but of course, it's conditioned on making sure we get the A and R plan completed, so.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it wouldn't get done by the end of this month, but we could take it up at our next meeting, which is on October tenth, we would certainly have an answer by then. And so what's the easier, from an administrative standpoint, is it to withdraw and resubmit, or is it just to agree to an extension with the applicant?
I think it's cleaner for withdrawal, if, if everything is intact, then we could just receive this at the next meeting. And add one of them.
Okay, so were you communicating with Ms. Bartlett, or no?
Not just yet, but I'm familiar from a previous meeting.
Okay, so I would say, why don't you arrange with John? And just to get it in writing, so we have it in writing, but just to confirm, since we do have to make a decision, I can sort of accept orally from you that, that you'll be withdrawing the application, resubmitting it, there'll be a waiver of any submission, resubmission fees, so it'll essentially be effectively an extension of time to get us to October tenth to allow us to decide on it then. And you're okay with that?
Agreed, yes.
All right, so we'll that'll be withdrawn, you communicate with John and, and we'll get that on the agenda for October tenth, and we'll get you an answer in the meantime.
Okay, and just to confirm, so if the, the question is that we may be creating less than a hundred fifty feet between the boundaries of the new A and R plan and the agricultural district?
Yeah, so the, the property next to it is in an agricultural zone, right, or the property that's being created next to it is in the agricultural zone, and you'll have a zero foot setback between, you know, the, well, it's probably not zero, but it's pretty, maybe zero. So it's basically a zero foot setback at some point between the solar facility and the agricultural property, so that has to be at a minimum a hundred fifty feet, or that requirement needs to be waived by the planning board, neither of which will be satisfied if this A and R goes through. And so we just need to figure out the solution there, like I said, I don't have a a problem with it, I actually think it's probably better to have you own it and control it rather than leasing it, but, but I do want to do it the right way.
Agreed, as do we.
Okay. All right, well, then we'll take this up at the next meeting on October tenth.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Back on planning board time. Short meetings are just a all right, nine Wally Way. Special permit site plan approval wellhead protection, district stormwater management permit. I don't, you. Yeah. Thank you. It's just easier. Your computer up. Good night, Mr. Brown.
Okay. Can you see it there? Okay.
All right. Special permit, nine Wally Way. What do we look at, is that the first, can you scroll down to get us to the end of that page? Perfect. All right. Any issues with the procedural history?
We stormwater management permit decision that's utilizing to stand in for the stormwater. It's dated February twenty-second, two thousand and eleven.
Wait, say that again?
So we're on page two?
No, on page one.
You said procedural history.
Oh, it keeps going, you're right, you're right, I was just looking. Folks can see online. Anything on page one, how about that, a procedural history? All right, there ain't nothing, we will move to page two. The procedural history up top. I assume you're highlighting Dick's name because he is the most supportive planning board member, and you wanted to point that out.
I firmly believe that, no, actually, I got clarification from Megan that there were two hearings missed.
Okay, all right, so Dick's name will come off.
Let me make that. I appreciate the, now that you're able to see what we have in front of us, sorry, Dick.
Sure. You can still weigh in, you can still weigh in. All right, so Jessica, you had a question on paragraph three?
Stormwater management permit decision issued by the soccer planning board dated February twenty-seven, two thousand and eleven.
That's the.
It's the date of the previous decision. So.
Two buildings that are already on property.
That's correct.
And we have agreed, and Randy and you both, that that permit decision from two thousand and eleven is sufficient to cover?
No, I think what I would rather have implied by that statement was that about the remaining provisions, I think we've used that language previously. But I'm all ears for a modification.
The
I'm sorry, let me, let me make the clarification. I do think that of the basis of that position, plans of record, the stormwater design and so on and so forth, that remains effective for the existing construction out there. So I think that's why we chose that language previously, but again, open to suggestion. It was just different, but similar when we were talking about the water computing. Just a parcel, one that had existing construction on it.
So this is needing to say that this is beholden to all those that are listed here in the procedural history? Yes.
Well, I would.
I just get nervous that now, twelve years later, we're gonna be in conflict in some way with this decision.
No. No. And that's fine, I just, if, if we're going to, let's let's table that for a minute and come back to it in the end, right, I don't, in my mind, what it says in the procedural history is not a condition of the permit, so if that's something that we want to clarify, it should be referenced in the conditions, not in the procedural history, you know what I mean? So I'm not as concerned about the language.
That is true.
All right, anything on the findings section A, if you want to just scroll down a little bit. Anything, no? Okay. Special permit criteria, I guess, let's look at one first, since that's on page two, or I guess we got a little bit, we got a four, how about one through four? Anything on special permit criteria, one through four?
These are seventeen general rules that are on every single thing, the exact same way every single time?
No, they change at the end every time, not every time, but.
You'll also suffer through.
Some of them are usually tweaked.
We're making reference with existing uses, remaining.
Asterisk to it, we'll go there and read that one.
There's a lot of asterisks on it, if you break it down to word level, for sure.
But then we can move with the seventeen golden rules, so they will just be there.
It would, it would be nice.
You gotta read the ending, that's what gets changed. Really, what you gotta do, Dave, is you gotta memorize, and then you'll know what is.
It should have been that thirty years ago, I'm still memorizing.
So you have homework now.
Oh, great.
Homework? One through four.
Yeah, all right, so we're getting on four, all right, one through four, let's go through five through whatever Jonathan's up to. All right, anything? One, five through fourteen, anything? Between who's seventh? There ain't nothing, I'm gonna go on to the specific findings. One through seven. One through seven.
That is cool.
Okay, that's fine. Um, you know, I put it in.
Sure.
Well, defines data, it's including one handicap swig. Anything on one through seven? Okay, eight through. Good morning, that page. I just don't know how you got the twelve on there, when I don't have twelve on there.
Secrets.
Uh, yeah, apparently.
There was one. Here the new auto save function.
Alright, so wait through fifteen, anybody have anything on these? There ain't nothing, I'm gonna go to sixteen through. Twenty-five. Twenty-six, that's pretty good.
Might have changed those six when we got there.
Be obtained.
Over time soon.
Let's move on. Decision is straightforward, scroll the terms and conditions. One through two. Alright, yeah, keep going. Four, should that go at the end?
I would look.
Four.
I like Karen, I'd like to put the end as well, how about that?
There you go, best of all worlds.
I'm sorry, we were on what numbers?
I screwed it all up now, so we are. Yeah, now we got to. Why don't you go with four on there? Looking at five through eight. So here's. Number, what is now number seven, let's talk about the language for this. Right, because this is Jessica's issue. So those terms and conditions remain in effect for. This particular building, or the entire property, or I don't want it to. The entire permit remains in effect for those. Buildings, for the, oh, for the property in those buildings, right? We are modifying. The permit to add in the ability to have this new building. Under these new terms and conditions. But so what, so that the terms and conditions number two, three, six, and seven. Remain in effect. Does that mean the rest of the terms and conditions are in effect? Right, so.
That sounds like a legal question to me. So this item right there is a bit of a placeholder for them to spur this discussion along, like, what, is there anything specific? We want to retain. Standard conditions, six and seven are more specific to. Probably approval of that site plan. Of the conditions. Or rather, we can make reference to that decision as it relates to the.
I think my inclination. Would be to say. All terms and conditions. Of the February twenty second two thousand and eleven special permanent site. Nine on there. Which have not. Since. Expired or which have not since been satisfied. Including specifically. Numbers two, three, six, seven, shall we? That's, that right?
Yeah.
Because the reason why you took those ones out is because they are sort of ongoing ones. Versus like condition one, which is. It should lapse on, what, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's done, and that already has come to conclusion, so. Um, and there's a couple of them which are in here, so they don't need to be carried on, but, so I would say, I would say. Any terms of condit- any terms and conditions of the February twenty second two thousand and eleven special permanent site plan approval decision from nine Wally Way. Which have not yet. Expired or. Been satisfied. And then I would put a comma, saying including specifically. Number two, three, six, and seven. Shall we?
There were seven, there's a spelling error. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Alright, that looks good. Alright, anything else on the remaining? Terms and conditions? I think I would say. That must would be to.
I like that.
On the, on where it says, our performance status listed in one eighty-five twenty-two G. Yes, please, guys. Alright. Okay, we're going through all. Three. Alright. Anything else that anybody wants to change or add or talk about before we vote on?
I just wanted, actually. Going, number four. Of the two thousand and eleven, I would say. Fire measures are firmly permitted to provide a list of all chemicals, pesticides, fuels, and potentially hazardous materials used to store and premises to provide. Then a number. It's now ten, yeah. Stories being toxic, explosive, corrosive plant where it has a material.
Let's see.
Maybe I'm missing it, yeah?
Enough. Oh, yeah, see. Maybe it's, maybe it's nine, you know, it leads to four. Yeah, I guess nine and ten are kind of, or what used to be nine and ten, so. Eight and nine.
I think.
I mean, I think the answer is it's not, it's not, or it's somewhere, it says that, I don't think we allow them to do any. Alright, I think that's the answer. I mean, I understand that they have the right to do it. No, you know what, I'm gonna say this. Well, no. Maybe than that. I don't know. Have we put both of those in before? Let me. But that's fine, so I mean, I guess it's, it's, I'm sort of making the assumption, right, that. A chemical or. A, a chemical has to be toxic or explosive, I mean, it doesn't have to be, I suppose. Right, I mean, it's.
I suppose acetic acid is. Is it a chemical the proper word there for that? You may have to take exception to that example, right?
I tried, and that's not toxic or explosive.
Well, so according to the wellhead protection, which is the one eighty-five twenty-two that we're talking about. That prohibited uses includes the storage of liquid petroleum products and or liquid hazardous materials. As defined in master general law, chapter twenty-one. So. The location of it being well protected, can have certain things.
Number is that, Jessica?
One eighty-five twenty-two.
Twenty-two, thank you.
There are special permit uses. To A, that requires that a complete list of chemicals, pesticides, or designs, and potentially hazardous materials.
I just think it becomes.
Of uses, so we're looking for a list of all potentially hazardous materials to be submitted to. Fire, police, border health, but also understanding that. Those are. Like who says in here, they can be used or goes associated, like, general use, like, you can. There's a little bit of oil in your car, you can't never not ever add it on the property, but. So where do we take that? And I think we should. Say. As listed in section five, seven of a special permit dated twelve years ago, we should. List it out here, the list of hazardous materials needs to be done, and, dang, you're also not allowed to have any super hazardous material as. Listed in last general law for art one eighty-five twenty-two, blah, blah, blah.
Why don't we have a, why don't we combine it into one that says? The applicant should provide a list, so that stays the same, and then after that sentence, right? The applicant. Should comply with section one eighty-five. Twenty-two F. Of the town of South by loss. Regarding. Which materials may be stored on. May be stored. With respect to which, yeah, materials may be stored on the. Does that, does that sound right? Is that right, Jessica? Okay, alright, I mean, I think that. If, if you order it that way, it causes them, because. Someone actually complies with it. You know, tells them what they have, and then obviously the decision be made of whether they should or shouldn't have those there in that little area, so it makes someone. Tell more than. You know, they can basically say what they have and then figure it out later. Alright. Okay, let's grab this one. Okay, any, anything else? Alright, do I hear a motion? To grant a modified special permit and site camp approval. As specified in this written decision.
Dave's being so moved.
Right here, second. Will I vote, Michael Thordi, aye?
Dave's been a aye.
Right here, a motion to grant a modified wellhead protection district special permit. As specified and subject to the terms in this written decision.
Dave's been so moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Your role call vote Michael Doherty, aye?
Dave's been aye.
Good shot, aye, Jessica, aye.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management permit, um. Uh, as specified and is subject to the. Written decision.
Dave's been so moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Do a roll call call Michael Doherty, aye?
Dave's been aye.
Good shot, aye, Jessica.
Jump on in.
One of the administrative things. I'm signing on him, I'm Marcus Phelps.
And.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, and a motion to, um, accept the written decision as, as, as amended tonight.
Dave's been so moved, right here, second.
A roll call vote Michael Doherty, aye?
Dave's been aye.
Don't be my stop, um.
I do, yeah.
I'm sorry, did you just do your name like long?
Look at where my name is.
And then look who signed it, yeah.
Alright, I've got it. I'm glad you have. Listen, if that's, if that's the.
If that's the.
Most weighty change representative, I'm okay with that.
Alright, uh, Mr. Phelps, can you give us the master plan advisory committee update?
Yes, I will, uh, let's see, uh, so we've already talked about the membership changes of the way the committee is, we have another meeting on Thursday. Which should be the last review, one would hope, of the materials, um, prior to presenting them to the planning board on October fifth.
I expect to be wow. I mean, I would.
Will there be question pie?
That's a real good question.
John, can you check the minutes, I didn't, didn't I ask for snacks?
I'm, I feel confident you asked.
I said, when have you not asked? So there's two motions, snacks and the end of the meeting.
Which one do you want first?
Um, alright, anybody have any comments that they want to make here? That are related to the planning board as a.
I wouldn't be gonna say anything.
I could see your mind work, I could see how your mind works.
I'm sorry, what's the, oh, you guys, I missed.
Alright, Mr. Sutton.
Make the motion, close the meeting.
Dave's been a second.
Said while eating a snack, um, it really comes off together for one.
Tell him your buddy.
All those are favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.